All right, reconvene. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Sanderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item E, adoption and approval of the agenda.
So...
Give me a second.
I'll second you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We can pull item number up.
Oh, we can?
Um, yes, on the teacher experience index, we were on the number map below the number.
We are happy to report that we have met the target.
Oh!
And we did not know that until Friday.
Oh, okay, so I guess...
Just pull the...
No public hearing required?
No public hearing required, excellent. Okay, item G, special recognitions and presentations. Name of the official will provide a report on the 2012-2013 tentative budget.
Yes, and I just found the PowerPoint.
Oh, good.
I was like, I know it's here. Yes, I'm going to keep this short, sweet, and to the point for this evening.
Steve, one in line?
Yeah.
Just one. It's a sad card.
I know.
Who does technically need it?
Okay. That helps. There we go. Yeah. So it's on the ceiling, there we go. All right, so, um, the last time we met, we talked about the fact that we would have an update for you based on the governor's may revise. There's not a tremendous amount of change in this budget, but there are a few things that I just wanted to share with you, so be a short presentation this evening. The difference from January to May, um, the current year shortfall grew from 9.2 billion to a whopping 15.7 billion, and part of this is related to the economy still being very sluggish and kind of being a bit more sluggish than what they had in system hated. And then also those very interesting revenues that they said that would come to fruition that have not in fact come to fruition.
May I just ask a question?
Yes.
Does that include the unfunded liabilities? Because there's a movement afoot to not carry those unaccrued. They have a contemporary gap standard where they have to actually book them as present liabilities. Does that include that?
No.
And you're right, the state does not recognize the liabilities. The amount to facilitate education is not part of this, but that's billions of dollars in itself. It's not something...
Yep.
Exactly.
And in addition to that, I mean, what is interesting is they get to claim if they add back in our deferrals, which is just for us a cash transaction, it has nothing to do with our budget, but on their side, they don't recognize that payment to us as part of their budget. So, and one of the reasons why when they added back in the cash deferrals, they're adding that to their budget as a real budget item and not just a cash payment. So we've always accrued based on what we should be getting. They've never recognized, or since these deferrals have happened, the state has not recognized their liability to pay that component of our budget.
Totally non-GAAP.
Yes.
So when we do our budget reports, can we just ignore our expenses? Do we have to...
Our expenses?
Yeah. So, um, I don't know how they get away from, you know, government acceptable accounting standards, but it's pretty amazing to me.
Because they're the ones that are making the rules.
Yeah.
Because the federal governments doesn't care.
So, um, anyway. Transitional kindergarten, um, the governor proposed that be eliminated, but it's not going to happen because basically the Assembly and the Senate are in alignment with the program needed to be in place. So, one way or the other, it's moving forward.
Whether it goes right or not.
Right, right, exactly. It's great, we'll add a new program that costs money.
And not money.
Yeah. And as you knew at the last meeting, everything hinges on the November outcome, on the, in particular, two of the initiatives, um, cash issues. You would think that with his proposal to actually pay us down the deferrals that they already owe us, that we would see a better cash position at the district level. And in fact, it's getting worse, and I haven't had time to fully analyze why it's getting worse, but it is. And it will become, if that initiative fails, the cash will be even worse than that. So, cash is going to be a huge, huge issue in 1213. Okay. The election, it's an election year, there's absolutely no political will to do anything that would, you know, shine a light on anybody's good, bad, or otherwise behavior, or lack thereof. So, um, there's no political will to do the right thing whatsoever. School finance reform, um, we talked about the weighted student funding block grant, and there's winners and losers in that, and it's because there is not enough money to actually fund it the way it should be funded.
And they still don't try to do that?
Well, you know, it's kind of iffy. It is tied to the governor's initiative to be implemented. And so, that has really not been very well thought out, and there could be horrible consequences to implementing it when it hasn't in fact... I mean, just when they recently proposed it, there was no recognition that the cost of providing an elementary education is far different than what it costs to provide a high school education, and that they were being funded at the same level. So, even on that very, very basic note, I mean, it worries me to think that that's how much thought they've put into it. So, um, Prop 98 is really just, really not anything that really supports education anymore, especially if the governor's initiative passes and basically then it allows the governor and/or the legislature to create special funds in which they separate out traditional state revenues into separate funds, and so the calculation of Prop 98 on the general fund is lower. And so, that initiative will completely decimate Prop 98. There's no... Prop 25, um, Prop 25 was what the voters said, "Look, we're tired of these really delayed budgets. We're very frustrated with them." And as you know, for this year's budget, John, the State Controller's Office had said that now you guys are not getting paid because you didn't submit a budget that was realistic.
Right.
So that got challenged in the courts, and the courts upheld that John Chang, the State Controller's Office, didn't have the authority to withhold the pay. So what they're saying is that only the legislature can withhold their own pay. Now, that's the fox watch in the hen house, and basically it has become a gutless proposition, and the voter's will has been decimated. Mandate reform, um, we'll see about this one. They're making it so difficult that, um, if they do a block grant style where you get a per ADA amount, then you, if you're out of compliance with any component of it, basically you risk losing all the money. And so you could have the block grant format, be heavily audited, or go through the process that we currently do, which is doing all the paperwork and having people spend countless hours monitoring the activities that they do throughout the district. So, um, in this budget, we've included what the District Budget Committee recommendations are that we have shared with you previously, um, and I won't go through the amounts, but decrease three teacher days, increase class size by one for grades four through 12, and by two for K3. Retirement option, I finally had all the information, that 128, 587 savings will occur this year and next year. Minus the transfer of the server here to the district office. We have a couple of operating leases expiring, or I'm sorry, lease purchase leases expiring. Decrease the substitute pay rate, very small savings, but it counts. If we are overstaffed at the San Antonio Child Care Center, we will reduce this 1FTE, Community Entrepreneurs, this is the general fund component only. Everything else has been funded by grants or entitlements. Transportation encroachment savings, transportation is still really up in the air. There are groups obviously that really want to protect it, and it's understandable because some of these districts are very rural, and transporting their kids, it's a huge impact if this is eliminated from their budget. We don't think it'll be eliminated, but the question will be whether or not it is flexible or not. If it's flexible, um, we may do the special ed transportation only since that's mandated by federal law. Increase revenues due, oh, this trade-out of the, um, uh, transportation from, if we would have taken the transportation hit, that would have been more than what was converted into a revenue limit, and it hit every district rather than select districts. Eliminate one in-house suspension position and don't issue the tax revenue anticipation notes, which in the past we've always issued every year, and that helps us with our cash flow. Since the county treasurer has offered us the best deal in town, and less than 1%, if we have to borrow, which we likely will, then it's, we don't have to go through the cost of issuing that tran, which in the past used to become at least, if not break even, we would make money on the transaction because of the difference in the interest rates.
Right.
So we already went over the class size decrease. The health benefit cap in this projection is remaining the same. And the dental cap is established based on the 1213 rate, oh, and this is our, I'm sorry. I'm trying to go fast because I know that you guys want to keep this short. But this is our tentative agreement with the Petaluma Federation of Teachers. So, um, the assumptions, if the initiative passes, the District Budget Committee recommendations are included in this, the cost of living adjustment is unfunded in 1213, but funded in 1314. So it'll be...
On paper.
On paper, not for real. This, this, you will see no revenue limit cut in this projection that I'm going to show you. The combination of the $13 per ADA cut that was triggered with the reduced revenue, and then the conversion of the transportation cut to $42 per student, that was supposed to be a one-time cut, so it's restored in 1213, but we'll see. Step in column for all salaries and benefits is included, and there's no change in the health benefit cap. So this is what our multi-year projection looks like. That bottom right number should be in yellow because it's positive, sorry.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it's positive, it's not in the red.
Okay.
It's not in the red. Yeah, no, no. This is the good, this is...
This is the best case.
Yeah, this is the best-case scenario. But we look at our 1314 ending fund balance of unappropriated funds of just under $4.3 million. And you can see that we have some growth in 1314 as far as ADA, and our deficit spending is almost pretty close to being break even at $243,000. And again, this assumes that the cost of living adjustment is funded here, and because it's not funded here, that's why you see $1.7 million in deficit spending. Okay, so the next trends that I will show you assumes that the initiative fails. This is one or both fail. There would be a $441 revenue limit cut. That equates to $3.2 million in lost revenues.
But it come here.
Yes.
Starting from my first.
Um, the health benefits cap, if it fails, we've agreed with our bargaining units to decrease the cap from $1,008 per month to $925 per month. And that will save about $347,000 in 1213, since we would make it effective in November when the initiative, when we see the results of the election, and it would save about $520,000 in subsequent years. So you can see that that $441,000 hit increases that deficit spending from $1.7 million to $4.5 million, and then in 1314, it's just under $3 million. And so, we go from having a four, over $4 million positive unappropriated fund balance to a negative 1.3. And this isn't even worst case, because if this COLA is not funded in this year, that gets, I don't know, $3 million worse. So uncertainties, which initiative passes, if any? There's been some information coming out. What if both initiatives pass? Well, the one with the most votes rules, is what we're hearing. So it wouldn't be a marriage of the two, it would be whichever one has the most votes. Flexibility, you know, we've had a lot of flexibility of our restricted programs that will start ending in 1314 and some in 1415. So, my guess is if things remain as bad as they are, flexibility will continue, and if not, grow.
So, meaning this is the last year for the K3?
No, 1314 will be...
Because it ends in a, is that before or at the end of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we would have that year to... So when we look at our multi-year projections, 1415, we just, we need to start factoring in the fact that we may have to, we may have to spend more dollars or dollars differently.
Right.
So that could make 1415 worse.
Even worse.
And that's it?
Thank you. Are there questions?
Most welcome.
Okay, well, cheering. So the next time you'll have the proposed that we will adopt.
Yes. Yes, and as I'm fine-tuning, you know, things like salaries and benefits, those numbers will...
Change.
Change.
Okay. But we don't expect any new information from the state, because, you know, June 15th is Friday.
Well, you know what?
You know, you're saying, you know, that they are required to adopt a budget and send it to the governor.
So we'll see what happens with that. And my, you know, they have, there is nothing to persuade them to put forth a realistic budget with realistic revenues. I don't know. It's just very disheartening that no one is doing their job of taking care of business at the state level.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, approval of the minutes of May 22nd.
I've looked at, there's a couple of comments. Nine and 10 under Business Services.
Oh, yeah, you abstained.
I believe we voted on both of them, so 10 needs to reflect that there was a vote, and nine reflects a five-vote motion. It was 4-1 because I abstained because of, you know, just kind of abundance of caution of maybe potential conflicts.
Okay, I'll bring this back.
Yep.
And I think you also need to reflect 10 as being a vote-on matter, because I believe item 10 was voted on.
So at this point...
So I would second them based on those adjustments?
Well, let's not.
Okay, we'll do them next week.
We'll bring them back at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll bring it back next week. Just have to check everything.
Does that slow down the bid?
No, doesn't slow down the bid.
No, we approved it.
You approved it in the last, or have gone out.
Okay. All right, so we'll bring that back. Item 5, comments in the public vote, the yellow part, those items not on the agenda. Okay, gonna have to read that. Item J, reprimand activities and correspondence for board members. Ah, it is a busy few weeks. All of the graduations, which are always the exciting part of this school year for many in the community, including adult ed and avancé. The, uh, several of us went to the San Rosa JC Community Breakfast last week, their first annual, and Cool the Earth fundraiser, North Bay Children's Center's fundraiser, and NCS softball game. So, it's been, it was a very full May, as I'm sure it was for all staff as well. Item K, approval of the consent agenda by a consolidated motion. There's one item that we will have to remove because we did not have the hearing, because we don't have to have the waiver, and that would be under Educational Services, item 1. So do I hear a motion?
So moved, as a minute. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Oh, I should say aye. I'll second.
Under Administration and Human Resources, item 4 is a hold item. Resolution 111243, recommended motion that Resolution 111243 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma Joint Union High School District proposing an election be held in its jurisdiction, requesting the Marin County Board of Supervisors to consolidate with any other election conducted on said date, and requesting election services by the registrar of voters be adopted.
So moved. You want to discuss?
We have to second it before we can.
I'll second it.
Okay.
So this is the required resolution for the pending board election in November.
And that's for the Marin part?
And this is the Marin, we've done the Sonoma County portion, this is the Marin portion, since part, there's a small part of the high school district in Marin County.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Under Business Services, item 6. Resolution 111244, recommended motion that Resolution 111244 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts of the County of Sonoma, State of California, to authorize designated personnel to sign contract and agreement documents for the fiscal year 2012-2013 be adopted.
So moved, second.
Um, just as a standard process of identifying who as administrators are allowed to sign those documents.
Okay, any questions?
Midge, is this the first year you're on here?
Um, no, I was on this year as well.
That just means you get to go to Dublin with everybody else, you know that, right?
Oh, yeah, wouldn't that be nice?
Not talking about Dublin, I'm talking about Dublin over the other side.
Talking about the minimum security prison.
Oh, that's nice. Okay, all those to paper. Well, we have to have some discussion.
Wow.
Okay. Item 7, Resolution 111245, recommended motion that Resolution 111245 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma Joint Union High School District, County of Sonoma, State of California, authorizing the issuance and sale of its 2012 general obligation refunding bonds be adopted.
So moved, second.
Midge?
Yes. Well, as you know, interest rates are extremely low, and we are taking this opportunity to refund some of our over $13 million in our bond issuances in the secondary district, and over the life of those bonds will save over a million dollars in approximately $85,000 annually by doing this...
To the taxpayers.
Yes, to the taxpayers.
For the taxpayers. Yes, excellent. That's a really, really good thing to learn.
Go easy on that, they're not used to the money, the savings going that way.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let me remove that. We have a discussion item under Educational Services. First reading again of the board policy, discussion regarding the following board policy, 6146.1, high school graduation requirements, as amended. Jane, would you like to...
So, as you remember, recall that this is the implementation of AV 1330, and it has to do with CTE courses and the opportunity for students to, um, elect to take an alternative CTE course in lieu of either art or performing art, visual performing arts, or for a language course.
Right.
Okay? So what we've provided the board is kind of three options. We've talked about this several times, and we've done some more investigation and looked into things a little bit more thoroughly. And we, if you recall your board packet last week, there were three options in that board packet. First option was to remain the same, because this is not a mandate, it's not something that we have to adopt, but we can just remain the same as it is right now. And it will really not have any kind of negative or positive impact on either CTE or art or foreign language courses. The second option is to fully implement AV 1330, which would allow students to take the CTE course in lieu of either the foreign language or the visual and performing arts high school requirements. Remember, this is just for high school requirements. And that really also, it may increase some students in CTE classes, but it's kind of hard to tell what kind of impact that would have until we actually implement it. And then the third option is the option that we've put forward before, and that is to allow students for high school requirements to take a CTE course in lieu of the art-only option of a high school requirement, and to hold steady on the foreign language, especially because of students who are kind of university-bound, they need that foreign language, that's three years of foreign language to get there. We talked to SCO and Patricia Biagi, I, Patricia Biagi included her email in your packet last week. And it's also kind of hard to assess what kind of impact, if we went this way, it may have, but it is suspected that just from other schools that have implemented some A through G courses that are CTE courses and A through G approved, it actually has increased the enrollment in those CTE courses, because then the students who are on a university track are able to choose those courses. So that brings up a concern, then what about our teachers? Are there any other requirements, any highly qualified teacher requirements, anything like that? And Patricia Biagi confirmed that there are no other requirements for them, because these are, can be electives, the G option under A through G, and that's an elective option. So there are no other requirements under highly qualified teacher or anything like that.
Other than being highly qualified?
Oh, they're being highly qualified in that particularly, but they don't have to meet the requirements of no child left behind.
Okay.
And, um, that, there is strong help from SCO, from Sonoma County Office of Education. They have been helping teachers around the county meet those A through G requirements and whatever CTE course they may select to have that happen with. In fact, they've actually helped several of the teachers here in Petaluma. One example is the 3M Pathway, Manufacturing, Media, and Marketing Pathway at Casa Grande. They helped Chuck Wade meet the A through G requirement... They helped Chuck Wade meet the A through G requirement on his web design class. That pathway is now oversubscribed, which means they have a waiting list to get in.
Okay.
So that's just one piece of evidence that this does actually help.
It will increase the enrollment.
It will actually increase the enrollment.
And approximately, how long does that take to get the approval?
It takes about a year to get it approved. So we wouldn't see anything. We would, we would need to provide support to the teachers in, anybody who chose to take this pathway. We would need to provide support to them in the 1213 school year. And we've got, actually have Perkins funds already set aside to do that.
Okay.
Because as, when the teachers came together to designate the Perkins funds, this is one of the things that they talked about, and we actually set aside some, some funds for that.
Okay.
Okay? That's where we're at.
Trying to form a question here. Is one of the not three options, would one of the not three options be, what we're trying to do is abort, oh, excuse me. What I would be very interested in is trying to support the CTE program such that more children have an opportunity within the constraints of their decisions on where they want to go to school, where they think they want to go to school, and what's important to them, to get into that CTE program. Some classes are not going to be able to be A through G. Basically, G approved, correct? I mean, there's going to be some, I don't know how you make, and maybe I'm wrong, Fred's not here, but how you would make, you know, beginning auto shop a G class? Is that realistically possible?
It is realistically possible, and there are actually classes in the state that have been approved, A through G automotive classes.
But are they the intro, the prob, even the first-year classes?
Because that's sort of, the idea is that we're trying to, we have conflicting goals.
Right, absolutely.
We have conflicting goals. We're trying to get students an opportunity to take that pathway, at least explore it. But at the same time, we don't want to pass the gate if they can. So if we can do it in the beginning classes, that would logically be the head to the automotive intro class, and I found out that I fell in love with it.
I really, really liked it.
And that's the one I want to take four years of it, and a little have taken in my fourth year, and now I don't have any opportunity to take anything at all, because I'm gone.
So there are opportunities to align even the beginning-level courses. We would need to explore that with Patricia Biagi and provide the support to the teachers in order to make that happen.
Can we do that before the second reading?
We can, absolutely.
This is first reading, right?
This is first reading, yes.
Yeah, so we've got time.
We can't change, we can't create those classes from and make them A through G for next year.
Not for 1213, but it would have to be 13-year. It would have to be a year-long.
This is only a five-year deal anyway, though, right?
And it's only a five-year deal, and then it's, then the state is going to reevaluate at that point.
As far as I'm concerned, as far as whatever the state deal is, one of the goals that I, I think we all have is to increase enrollment in CTE classes.
Yes.
And if this process could help us increase that enrollment and provide options for kids who are wanting to go to college and to take these courses, to me, that is positive. And unfortunately, it can't happen for the coming year, but if we can start the ball rolling to increase options for kids.
Well, theoretically, though, it could happen if we fully implemented AB13, whatever it is, and said.
You could, what you would do is you would say.
There wouldn't be G classes.
Yeah, they would not be G classes, so you would.
And again, that goes back to competing goals.
Right, 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 right. That's the, that's the rock and the hard place here.
I mean, we could, if, if we implement either, you know, two of the options, either one of two, it will increase opportunities for students to take a CTE class in lieu of visual and performing arts. It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be a magnet for students who want a G class, until they get approved.
As, several of the teachers who have spoken to the board have talked about how they've had students who have graduated and have returned or communicated that they really didn't know that the auto shop, or the wood shop, or that the CAD courses were available. And with the, the support of the A through G, it begins to make it more available to everybody on the campus. If we fully implement AB1330, because the students on the university track still have all the requirements of the A through G, they will have less oppo, they will have the same opportunity they have right now to take a CTE class.
Right. That's correct.
It doesn't increase the opportunity for college-bound students to take a CTE class.
Right.
Do you have curtains?
No. I know that the master scheduling is extraordinarily difficult at the high school level. And I know that we, in comparing the number of counselors, we have, you know, number of students that report to one counselor is, is, you know, the worst in the country, in the state of California. And there isn't any way to really be able to, you know, support the students as best as possible, as we'd like.
They must be doing okay. Petaluma High had the highest percentage of kids go to college in history.
They're doing phenomenal work. We'd like to be able to do more, but we don't have the resources. So, you know, for me, it's, there's no difference in opportunities for college-bound kids if we approve of the waiver in either of the other forms. It's just, it might affect those who don't know if they're going to college yet, if they don't. But if we start the process of increasing a G and they can have a G course count later on, to me, that's a positive.
I wonder, does the idea of making it a G course change the actual intent of the CTE program? In other words, again, just harping on auto shop. If we went through whatever we had to do to make it a G course, would that then divert it from its current path, which basically produces somebody ready to be employed in the automotive industry when they graduate?
Well, currently, what, I mean, if you've been listening to NPR with all in the last week.
Right, yeah.
They, there's been this ongoing series of reports that have been coming out for the last couple of weeks about career readiness. And career readiness of, of high school graduates, not from Petaluma, but from California. And one of the things that they're saying is that the level of rigor that has to happen for kids, even in an automotive, even in an automotive shop, even in, if you're going to be mechanic these days, you have to be able to read a technical manual. You have to be able to work with computers. Because they take your car and they plug it in. And that's how it is these days, is that the, the rigor that is required is amping up.
Because the technology is changing.
Because the technology is changing. And as they, as we implement the Common Core standards, you will see that they'll actually be required to partner, everybody will, literacy across all of the content areas will become kind of the focus. And many of the classes will actually be using pieces of technical manuals to teach cause and effect, or whatever they happen to be looking at and focusing on in their literacy studies. They will actually be using pieces of technical manuals, for example. Or documents like the Gettysburg Address, or, you know, these different kinds of actual authentic pieces of text, as opposed to the anthologies that they're using right now, or the novels that they're reading. They'll still be doing that, but you'll be seeing these other pieces added in. Because there is a recognition that we really need to amp up the literacy and readiness skills, not just readiness skills in literacy math, but the 21st century readiness skills for everybody.
Isn't part of the problem that there's a disconnect with AG through what you're talking about and what the universities are accepting? They'd rather have you take French classes than auto shop. Apparently, that translates better.
Some people are saying that.
Well, it's part of it when you look at what they're, where they're directing kids. So when I could easily make an argument that A through G certified or not, you're much better off taking a basic computer, you know, engineering class or some sort of computer skills class than you are, with all due respect to French, taking a French class. But I think something's going to have to be done at that level.
And there is, yeah, this, everybody is working very diligently right now on this whole new Common Core and the whole idea of college and career readiness. Because what you're talking about, Mike, is the college or career readiness. And that's, the focus is really changing on that little article in there that it is going to be and, and we want all the kids to be able to make that choice.
Well, and the last point, I think it's okay if, if kids understand early on that it may enhance for certain colleges and perhaps detract for others. I mean, a liberal arts college is probably going to want to have a real strong bent that way, and maybe like a Cal Poly, you know, would like to see more of a hands-on curriculum.
Yeah, and that might, if we have.
If we have counselors knowing that you're just oriented that way, you're not ruled out of college.
That creates options of getting in.
Exactly.
If they've, if they've had these hands-on courses that are Gs, that might make a big difference for acceptance.
Exactly, and I think that actually expands some of their opportunities.
Okay.
Well, let me just finish this with just a question then. So are we, are you saying that based upon, because this is basically bringing back what was here last week or two weeks ago, right? And are we making it more, are you making it more palatable, if you will, by saying that some of these classes, we can actually convert to G classes? And that way, it's a mixed, it's a, it's a win-win, for lack of a better term? That based upon your conversation with SCO, that there's an opportunity to convert some of these classes to G classes, and then therefore, there'll be more classes that are CTE quote gateway classes, if we want to call them, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, if we, for lack of a better term. And I think what we're doing is we're clarifying. We're clarifying the intent.
Right. And we had to find out about the, how they qualify.
We had to find it, yeah.
We weren't sure that was going to.
We had to clarify that, yeah.
And so then the backside of the question is, do we have a desire to do that from the school level, from the staff level, from the Perkins grant money level? Is there a desire in that school, in that department, to actually try to do that as making it a gateway class? Or are we just coming up with a policy that nobody really wants to implement? And I don't know the answer, I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah.
Evidence, piece of evidence that I have is that at the Perkins meeting, when we had two people from Petaluma High School and one person from Casa Grande, there was a desire to write it into the grant that we begin to explore and expand and support teachers being able to qualify for the G requirement of A through G. That's the only piece of evidence I have.
I guess I just need to talk to some folks and see if the feeling is there.
So we can do that before we bring it back?
First reading.
Okay. Okay. Public report of action taken in closed session in accordance with government code 4957.1. Case number 55. The case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and suspend the side discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in the district operating school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the 2012, 2013 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance. Do I hear a motion?
Moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Future business calendar of activities for board members' consideration and agenda items for our next meeting, which is June 26th here.
We'll have the adopted budget, and we're anticipating having a food service report.
D-LAC, the yearly D-LAC report?
Okay.
Will there be food service same point?
Food service, you're exactly right. Look at their course, bring on the dinner.
And then, and then the wrap-up on 1330. All right, anything else? And we will adjourn, recite papers, return nature, thank you all for coming.